Startings, starting. I would like to welcome everybody to the Disabilities Commission meeting for April. And everyone can hear me and see me? And everyone can see the interpreters? Everyone who needs them, we're good.
I can see the interpreters.
Okay, I can see my picture.
Can you hear me?
I can see four people.
Can you hear me, Matthew?
I can hear you, sir.
Great, we're good to go. We're getting started.
Great.
Thanks for, thanks everyone for coming. This is on, and when you're not talking, Matthew, can you mute yourself?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, that's tough. It's always tough to be the pioneer, the innovators, but that's what we do. So thanks again for the, the being patient. We're doing big things. This is a, this is a big step. Again, welcome, everybody. This is the Disabilities, Disabilities Commission regular meeting, Monday, April 4th, 2022. It's been a while. It's been since January, since we last met. We've had a surge and things are come, calming down a little bit. And now we have the BA2, so a little bit of uncertainty. The commission has been up to a lot of things. Shout out to Commissioner Azariah for doing the homeless count. Shout out to Commissioner Link Ellis for connecting with the city manager. Shout out to the, the library I met with and had some good conversations. Just a lot's going on. You guys are doing a lot of work, but it's been quite a strange year, an unusual one, unlike any other. But hopefully, things are starting to settle down a little bit and we can get into a more regular cadence and take care of some of the business for the city. So just with that opening, I want to start with the agenda. Our first item is a special agenda item. And we're swearing in our new member, Commissioner Matthew. Oh, no, before that, I gotta take a tenet, sorry. Let me start with that roll call. Commissioner Azariah?
Yes.
Commissioner Charles?
I'm here.
Commissioner Lee Gellis?
Here.
Commissioner Nicholas?
Present.
Commissioner Sussman?
I'm present.
Commissioner Wetter?
I'm here.
And Commissioner Elliott is here. So we have a quorum. Thanks again, everybody. And our first order of business is we got to swear in our new member, Commissioner Sussman. We'll get, we'll go through the business of doing the oath and everything. And then I want to give Commissioner Sussman just a couple of minutes or a couple of seconds, whatever he's comfortable with introducing himself. But first, Commissioner Sussman, are you ready? Can you hear me?
I am, sir.
So I'm gonna read the oath to you. You're gonna have your right hand up and you're gonna repeat what I say, okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I, Matthew Sussman.
I, Matthew Sussman.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the Disabilities Commission.
Of the Disabilities Commission.
Awesome. This is subscribed and sworn to before me this fourth day of April 2022. Awesome. Welcome to the commission, Commissioner Sussman. And I just want to give you a second to introduce yourself to the commission. Talk a little bit about you, what you're interested in, and just let us learn a little bit about you.
My name is Matthew Sussman. I'm 56 years old. I am bipolar. I am in treatment and therapy. I do a lot of volunteer work with Step Up on Second and the Deaf and Playhouse, and I also participated in the homeless count.
Awesome.
And my, my interests are affordable housing, prescription reform in Congress, and I'm very much into technology and computers. Particularly website design and programming languages. And I live in downtown Santa Monica.
Thanks for sharing. Anyone have any questions or anything they want to ask before we get moving? Oh, actually, Matthew, can you turn off your phone? You don't need to have both your phone and Teams.
Okay.
Perfect. Can you hear me now?
I can.
Excellent. You're good to go.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so I want to keep the agenda moving to item five, staff administrative items. Reports from the ad hoc committees and liaisons and discussion and possible action on reestablishing and/or establishing additional ones. We're starting with the ad hoc committee on digital equity, which is myself, Chair Elliott, Commissioner Azariah, Commissioner Nicholas, and Commissioner Link Ellis. Does anyone, any of those commissioners want to start? I have a few things I want to share, but do any of the other commissioners want to start and share?
I just want to say that I don't have anything to report, but I also want to share that I've had difficulty with my commissioner email. So I apologize if anybody tried to reach out to me, but I'm looking forward to having something to report for the next meeting.
Thank you, Vice Chair Wetter.
I don't have anything to report, but I'd love to hear it or, you know, get more involved. So, thank you.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
I don't have anything to report at this time, but I would love to get involved in the, in the digital equity. Thank you.
Alex?
Yes.
I suggest that you show everybody how to turn their captions on. So in case Commissioner Sussman can't understand you, he can be reading the captions.
Commissioner Sussman, are you on the application or the browser?
I'm on the browser.
Shoot. Abel, can you help him with getting his caption setup on the browser?
Oh, yeah, let me call him right now, okay?
Thank you.
Go ahead and mute him too.
Sorry about that.
No worries, no worries. We're, we're learning this time. It'll be this, it's gonna be bumpy. It'll be smoother moving forward.
Right.
This is part of innovation. Okay, let me. Um, so there, there's been some big things on the federal level going on. For the first time in about, I believe it's 16 years or so, the federal government, the Department of Justice finally gave some guidance on web accessibility and the ADA. And, and this guidance describes how state and local governments and businesses open to the public can make sure their websites are accessible. This is a big step that just, there's some documentation out there and some guidance from the Fed. So that's something I'm hoping I want to share with city council, just so they're aware of this. And there's some ideas on some best practices on how to make web content accessible. And leading, and I'll share that with the commission. I'll email that, all that out, because that's a big deal. But related to that is, there's a big report by an organization called WebAim. And they analyze the top 1 million websites and share issues around accessibility. And their findings this year is the top million sites all have a lot of accessibility issues. The good news is they're slightly better than last year, but there's still a long way to go. And hopefully with efforts like this guidance and more awareness of this and our advocacy, this will continue to get better. Because this is a topic that has come up in our commission. We've had presenters talk about this. We've talked about it here. But that digital divide for people with disabilities, that disability divide is widening COVID. And part of it is because our digital spaces are not accessible. And our people with disabilities, many of them are well-versed, tech savvy, but it's, it's not on them. It's on the websites and the digital solutions. It's how they're built. It's on them. So hopefully, some guidance like this will lead us in the right direction. But I think it's our job and my job and all of us to make city council and city manager aware of this guidance. So we're headed in the right direction. It's gonna be a process. It's gonna take some time, but it's, it's essential as government services and businesses are becoming more and more digital. So I'll send that out, but I just wanted to make folks aware of those two things. Also, on the federal level, the EEOC just had a really interesting webinar around disability bias, algorithm bias in hiring, which is another big issue that we've talked about a little bit in here. But just hiring systems use these automatic systems to sort candidates. And they rely on scoring. Machine learning relies on scoring. And there's bias in the scoring as it relates to folks with disability. So the federal government just had a session with some experts in the field, and they're aware that this is an issue. They also talked about issues around telework software for monitoring employees and how that can affect people with disabilities disproportionately. So I just wanted to make that aware to the commission, that there's a lot of stuff going on at the federal level that we need to be aware of locally. And then just some stuff I've, I've worked on is I connected the library to get some stuff posted, some accessibility resources posted on their website. And they're working on getting some resources on, they're related to digital literacy and accessibility settings on the, the most popular platforms, so Apple, Windows, Android, Microsoft products. How to toggle the accessibility settings. We're hoping to get that on the library's accessibility website. I also met with, the city is transitioning to a new website system. They have an accessibility page that our Disability Commission website lives. And they provided me a template that we can fill out with suggestions to update that webpage. So that's something I want to share that template with the commission, with this ad hoc and get your feedback on ways to make the, the new website more robust with resources that the community should, should be aware of. And I, I think one to start off with might be this guidance on web accessibility. Because there are resources currently around just ADA for business, but I think now business includes digital spaces. And I also wrote a blog for the Department of Mental Health around capital, it was around the capital crawl, but and just bringing awareness to that, but also sharing a lot of digital resources on accessibility. And that, that's my update, but just as an action item, I want to send that template over with the, so we can provide feedback to, to update the new website. Oh, and one, one other thing, when I met with the library last week, there, we talked about, in the past, we've had physical spaces at the library where we've highlighted digital or authors and other folks with disabilities highlighted them. We're gonna get, do that digitally. So we're gonna get a curated list to go on the website, on the library's website with like Judy Hume's book and other books. And I want to work with you guys to get suggestions from you, so I can send them to the library, so they can upload, upload that list of content. And they're, they're also in September going to restart their happy hours. These events at the library where they teach folks digital skills. And I said, we have some interest when they start that up again, probably in September, to include content around accessibility. So I definitely want to loop you guys in as I hear more. And they're, they're anxious to work with them, us. They'd love to collaborate. If we want to do things for May's Mental Health Month moving forward or other themes, as long as we give them lead time of a couple of months and be in communication with them, they'd be happy to collaborate with us. That's a lot, but it's been a couple of months, so that, that's my update. Are there any questions around that?
So that, you mentioned that in the, the library will start in September. Is that face-to-face or?
That, that's the idea. They, before COVID, they had these face-to-face happy hours where folks would come in. Sometimes it was students or folks with technical skills would teach people how to use their computers and whatever questions. There wasn't really a set curriculum. It was based on the needs of the people that day. But I, when I spoke with them, I offered to share resources around accessibility. So if folks had accessibility rate-related question, they'd be well-versed in how to support people coming into those classes.
And it's in the main library?
I believe so. I believe it's been at other branches as well, such as the PICO branch. But I didn't ask, but I know it was in person. I'm not sure if it was at all the libraries or just the main one.
Okay, thank you.
But I, I was excited that they, they really want to work with us. So that, that's something to note moving forward.
That's a, that's a very good resource, especially for seniors and people with limitations.
I want to get the, the name of the, the site where our curated resources will go. I wrote it down. Oh, it's a Bibliocomms. So there's a Santa Monica Public Library Bibliocomms section where we can curate content. So if you have content ideas that you want to go on our Bibliocomms playlist or whatever you want to call it, please let me know. We'll, we'll get a bunch of them together and we can send it to the library. And then we can on our, on the website post to that. So there's this constantly refreshed curated list of content highlighting the work of people with disabilities, resources and stories that are helpful to people with disabilities.
Can I be heard now?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know how to unmute it. I did want to say that it is really exciting news to learn that the Play Hour is gonna start again, because it was wonderful. It was in, they, they went on different libraries, you know, every time they had it, they'd have it at PICO or they'd have it at the main library. And it was just absolutely wonderful. I just want to go woo-hoo, woo-hoo, woo-hoo to get that back. I know the, all the stuff you said about the digital divide and, and everything that you're doing on it. I think that is great. But to tell you the truth, I'm just super excited about the nuts and bolts of Play Hour. Because that's what really, really helped me and what I miss the most from that. So thank you very much for all your, you know, for all this stuff on the digital divide. It is so important. And I'm grateful that we get our Play Hour back. That's great news. Over and out.
Thank you, Commissioner Kazma Adage. Yeah, it's exciting. Hopefully, September. Okay, there's no more comments on that ad hoc on digital equity. The ad hoc committee, Committee on Mobility Issues, Commissioner Block and Commissioner Kazma Adage, do you have any updates you'd like to share?
Just that they changed the, the wheelchairs are now both at the Hollister Avenue Perry's Cafe. It used to be one up at, by the Annenberg, the Perry's up by the Annenberg and one by the Hollister, but they're both there now. That's all. That's the only change that I know of.
Thank you for that update.
The beach, the, the beach wheelchair. I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't specify that. The beach wheelchair. That's what I was talking about.
I don't think we have Commissioner Block. Are there any questions around that ad hoc or any follow-ups?
I have one question. I was under the impression that they were going to increase the number of beach wheelchairs. And buy the heavier duty wheelchair that has the, you know, the tread. And I was just wondering if there was any movement on that? Or if that's something that got, you know, put on the back burner with the, because of the pandemic?
Commissioner Kazma?
Yeah, that's on, that's, that's on the back burner. And actually, there are other issues that I don't know how to address them actually with the beach wheelchairs. Because like, I was down there five years ago to test the beach wheelchairs and make recommendations. And the recommendations that we did not ma, that we made were not followed. So they got different, you know, a different kind of wheelchairs, which I can't really use. So, you know, there's these other issues involved with getting more beach wheelchairs. And I think that the way they're developing wheelchair, one of the reasons that they're, that it's probably better to just leave it on the back burners a little bit, because they are developing wheelchairs so fast these days. I mean, they are now, within a very short amount of time, we are going to have wheelchairs that anticipate what we need. You know what I mean? It's gonna be interactive with our whole body kind of thing. So that aspect is really exploding. And the, the, I just don't think that the city has any money for anymore, you know, for anymore beach wheelchairs. And like I said, the, the, there's the issue of getting the right kind of beach wheelchairs. It's great to have them, but if they don't serve as the most possible, you know, users, wheelchair users, then it's just restrictive for, for the wheelchair, you know, the people who need that kind of wheelchair, you know, like that kind of thing.
And Commissioner Kazma Adage, a follow-up question. So you're saying there's, there may be a big jump in the next generation of these wheelchairs? So it's kind of tough on when do you jump in and get, get new ones, because they may get much, much better next generation?
Well, yeah, they're, they're, it's going so fast and they're developing them, you know, that, that, and, and but I think basically more than anything else is that, that the city could not even get the kind of wheelchairs that we needed. You see what I mean? And so to get more wheelchairs that aren't, that don't service everyone, you know what I mean? I think for me, the issue has to be addressed as to, you know, if, to, that we are down there, we make these recommendations. These recommendations are made for a reason, you know, to service as the most amount of pieces, people possible. We chose two different kinds, you know, to, but, but they got two of the, anyway, that's, that's just, I think, a side issue.
I have a question.
For now.
Go ahead.
As, maybe this is naive, I'm new to this commission, but would it be possible to approach some of the hotel resorts that are right there on the beach as a commission and just see if there's some way for them to sponsor a wheelchair in their sort of real estate right there on the beach that would, you know, be labeled as disabilities-friendly, City of Santa Monica, amenity, somehow public-private partnership?
I don't think that would work for all kinds of the legal reasons and things. I just don't see how with the city. I mean, TJ would know more about that, you know, on the legal aspects of public-private kind of thing. But with wheelchairs, I don't think it would work. And I, to tell you the truth, right now, I just don't know how, how much is needed. There's just so much missing. We, we don't even have, you know, we used to give out flyers at all the tourist places. So the tourists would know that, where these beach wheelchairs were and everything. But we don't have any of that in place anymore. So to get, to get another wheelchair when these ones, there's issues that have, I think have to be resolved before, but I don't know. I would love to get as many wheelchairs as we can. But, but anything private would have to, you know, be in liaison with the city for sure legally. I know that much. And I don't know, for right now, I just and plus, it's a, it's a big, you know, it's, the city just doesn't want to expend anything for anything. I'm on the Garden Advisory Committee, you know, and it's trying to get gardens and things. And so it's just, I don't think it's, if somebody else, I can't push it. But anybody else that wants to go there, you know, the more wheelchairs, the better. But I would like to see the right kind of wheelchairs, like for one, wheelchairs that I can use and someone in my condition. And not just standard wheelchairs that limit, you know, that only these amount of wheelchair users can use them, that kind of thing. I would rather address those issues first before getting more wheelchairs.
Make a note that I have a video of a wheelchair that we tested out. It was in 2018. And it was one of the new wheelchairs that had that tread that, you know, like tanks have. And we, the, the four people who tried it really liked it, and they had different sizes. One of the issues with Santa Monica is the sand is so fine that all the traditional beach wheelchairs that are electric, they just chewed through them. So we had to find a wheelchair that could handle our sand. And there are a lot of other logistics involved, but I thought they had ordered two of them. I'm going to send you, Chair Elliott, I'm gonna send you the video that I have of that one, just for your reference. Again, this is something that we'll have to take up again, you know, once we're back into some sense of normalcy.
No, I agree. And thank you for, for sending that over. And I see Commissioner Wetter's hand is up.
Hello, I just wanted, I just wanted to say about our major, it seemed to, it makes a lot of sense to me to pay attention and try to work on the infrastructure issues. Right now, before we, instead of experimenting, because we want to make sure that we can take care of the wheelchairs that we do have and will get. And to make sure that people can find them and ask us from, so it sounds like we have a lot of infrastructure issues to straighten out.
And I think, are we switching interpreters? I want to be mindful of that. We're good. And, and thanks for your insight, Commissioner Wetter. I, I agree with that. Do we have any more comments on the ad hoc on mobility, or should I keep it moving?
I'll just make one more. I will, this is Catherine. I will just contact, I forget her name, but I have it. You know, contact the woman that sort of just takes care of the repair of the wheelchair. I forget her name, but I have it, you know, contact the woman that, uh, um, sort of just takes care of the repair of the wheelchair. And that's the only connection I know to the, to the city government is, uh, the, the, and she told me she doesn't know anything about what's happening with or anything like that. She just pays the bills. When, when the wheelchairs need to be repaired, she pays for them, sends them back to Perry's Cafe. So that's all. But I'll, I'll check up on that and see if I can find somebody who, who, you know, I don't remember. You know, we had all these lines, all these committees, all these things moving before and they were all broken. And now we have to, you know, get them all together again.
Yeah, no, it's, it's been tough to get a momentum just in this past year plus, but, um, no, I'm hopeful. Things, things are settling down a bit and, um, we'll meet more regularly and, and we'll get some amendments going and, and take care of a lot of the business we can. Um, Commissioner, uh, is that his area?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was unmuted. Is there a way that we can track the wheelchairs, like those scooters? Is there like a tracking? I mean, because how do we know that we still have those wheelchairs or they're taken, given the, that? I mean, given the conditions right now, a lot of, if they're not tracked or labeled or somehow, um, you know, things are disappearing as well from like, uh, if I leave something outside, it does disappear like a scooter. So I just want to make sure, do we have those wheelchairs that we used to have?
Well, I checked just a few days ago and there's still the two G wheelchairs, uh, down at Perry's. But I don't know what condition they're in. But as far as I know, they're, they're still working, you know? I mean, I called up, that's what they, that's what they said. Like I said, I didn't go down and check them, but they were both working and available. So.
Thank you.
If, we used to have that map of where they're all located, but then there's a separate question of how do we track? The wheelchairs, uh, I don't think it has the technology like a scooter, but that, that's a good point.
Well, that's what we wanted to do. We wanted to know, you know, have them say how many people use them? Because TJ, you know, he's the legal expert. He said that that really convinces the, the, the city council to get more wheelchairs if they see that they're being used this amount of time and this, you know, all that kind of thing. But see, that's another thing. All those lines, all the committees, all the stuff, they, they have to be reconnected. We do, we, you know, it's, the infrastructure just isn't set up, uh, for that.
So is there? Sorry. Uh, Commissioner, uh, Casman Dodge, is, is there a contact person that we used to go to to get those statistics on ridership? So we can start to track that moving forward?
No, we were developing that. That's what we wanted to do was start, um, a committee that would take care of that. And, but it, it, uh, because we had to get Perry's, that's, we had to get Perry, uh, in the loop, you know, to, okay, somebody signed up, uh, for, you know, came and used it this amount of time. So we had a log. And also we were hoping to change the way, and now it's just anybody comes. You can't reserve it, whatever, you know, you can go and it's two hours and, and that's it. But, um, we wanted to have other options available, but, but basically we wanted to track everything and, and all that. But no, I don't know. We, that's why I say, I'll start looking to see who, you know, if the, if the commissioner or who, who takes care of paying for it, um, she must have some kind of, uh, contact. So I'll check, I'll go that route and see what we can do.
Yeah, if there, if there's any log, even aggregate numbers, I think would be, uh, a helpful metric to advocate, um, to get more at some point. There's any longer, any data point.
Yeah, the more, any data we can get would be great. Um, I can ask them. I don't have no idea who's, I don't, it's somebody else. The person who deals with Perry's, that's somebody else, you know, the person who deals with Perry's with the wheelchair. That's a different person. So, yeah.
Yeah, if you're able to, to find out any information about that, please let us know, um, because I think that would be helpful.
I'll definitely, and yeah. Take care of that.
They were originally purchased by the Parks and Recs Department. And they were also the ones that were investigating the new ones. So I'm sure a staff person could lead you to that Parks and Recs contact.
So it's Parks and Rec.
They know at Perry's. Perry's knows, they know who it is. Somebody, you know, the, maybe not the waiters and stuff, but somebody at Perry's, uh, know, they, you know, knows who they deal with, with the city and the wheelchairs.
Is, um, just checking, is, is everyone on the commission able to see that interpreter? Is, is that working for you? Whether you're on the web browser or the application, is, is everyone's accessibility needs, uh, being met by the interpreters? I, I'm just, I'm hearing there's some technical issues on the browser side. But I just want to check in and make sure everyone is okay.
I can see the interpreter. And Alex, I want to thank you for asking able to call me. He called me twice.
No worries. This, we knew this first one's going to be bumpy. So, uh, just if you, if we need to take a second to get recalibrated with the technology, that's okay. Um, it's our first time in a new platform. It's going to be rough, but it'll get easier.
I just want to say that for anybody that's using the interpreters, I would suggest that you pin both interpreters. So that if one turns off the video and the other, if they swap out to the other interpreter, you are able to see both of them. Sometimes if you don't pin them, the video, the video might just disappear. And you had, you might have trouble finding the other interpreter. But if you pin them both, they stay on the screen.
Thanks. Now this, I think this is just, we'll start with all this stuff. Just to, it got, we got off to a hectic start. Things were not working as, as properly. But just moving forward, I think, starting with instructions, getting the technology right, we'll, we'll, we'll bring into the culture here. This is just a weird, a weird start, but, uh, we'll do better. I'll do better moving forward. Okay, um, are, are we good on, uh, this, this ad hoc and should we move on to the policy playbook ad hoc update? All right, ad hoc committee on, uh, Santa Monica policy playbook, Commissioner Charles and Vice Chair Wetter, any updates?
Well, I'll just say that as Vice Chair Wetter mentioned, um, we were not able to connect since our last meeting several months ago. So I think we need to somehow figure out how to communicate, um, with each other via email so that we can make some progress there.
That's right. Uh, we haven't, nothing to report now, but we will by the next meeting.
Great. Yeah, if, if my memory serves me right, I think they, they, if we had, they can add an addendum or we can just a word document. I think that was the, I think we asked on how they could ingest that data from our commission. And I think we could write them suggestions or I wasn't sure, but, um, yeah, I, I think meeting and, and making a plan is the next step. But any other folks have comments, thoughts about that? And if, if you're not speaking, can, uh, you mute, uh, mute yourself?
Alex, is there any way you could, in a short sentence or two, explain the item you're discussing?
Sure. Um, and you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Uh, so we formed some ad hocks and ad hocks are a group of commissioners that work on a, a specific topic. Um, sometimes an ad hoc might make a, a, a letter to the city council or some sort of deliverable in a, a, a short time period. Um, and the particular ad hoc we were talking about was one focused on the Santa Monica policy playbook. So the, the city has created a playbook on how to take things kind of from an idea to a city policy. They wrote a playbook, um, and we had someone from the city present on it as well. He, he gave a PowerPoint presentation and the commission asked him questions. And one thing, um, and I don't want to speak for the whole commission, but, uh, we had some thoughts about maybe there could be, there's opportunity to include some more things about accessibility, serving folks with disabilities. So as a result, we wanted to create an ad hoc to provide those recommendations.
Great idea.
And that had ad hoc, um, is comprised of Commissioner Wetter and, um, Commissioner Charles. And, um, at each meeting, um, uh, the ad hocks we create give an update of, of what they've been working on since the last meeting. Um, and just to check in. And ad hocks are time limited, so they don't last forever.
Right.
So eventually we close them and we'll create new ones. And so that's usually an agenda item is do we want to add any new ad hocks or do, do we want to think about sunsetting the existing ones? Um, but.
Playbook is available online?
Um, I, I will send you a copy after this meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Um, did, did I miss anything? Uh, more, uh, folks who have been on the commission, uh, uh, longer than me, I want to make sure I cover, cover everything. And, um, also Commissioner, um, Sussman, that, that, um, video is on the website. It was at a, I think it was at either the, I think it was the January meeting. You can watch that recording.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I'll follow up with an email.
I may, I may interject, I may say something. Somebody, I think somebody's microphone is on because it, the code captioning, the, um, automatic captioning, it's picking up somebody's background audio from a TV or John's like.
Okay. I think, uh, whoever's TV was on just muted, but just, just a reminder, if you're, if you're not, uh, talking, if you could kindly, um, mute yourself, that would be helpful. All right. Are there any more thoughts on the policy playbook or should we move on to ideas for new ad hocks? Uh, Evan or Commissioner Nicholas?
Hi, yes. Well, we can certainly, uh, if, if we can, um, once we're ready to move on to the book on, uh, discussion of the last ad hoc, I did have one idea for, uh, for a new ad hoc I'd be interested in being involved with.
Sure. Let's get, let's get started on that. Go ahead.
Okay, okay. So I, um, I had, so my, for, for those of you who haven't gotten to talk to personally or, or might be new to the commission, um, a huge part of why I'm involved, uh, or was, was inspired to be involved with this commission is, is my three-year-old daughter, uh, has, was born with genetic syndrome and will be growing up in the city of Santa Monica with, uh, with a disability. And, um, one of the things I've become aware of is there might be some opportunity for advocacy with the, um, Parks and Rec programming. Uh, basically the Parks and Rec have huge lists of, uh, classes that, um, you know, all kids from the community and even kids outside the community can, um, pay a fee, but the fee is very reasonable. And, you know, participate in things, everything from dance to tennis to soccer. I mean, there's a million things. Um, and I do, and I do think, uh, yeah, well, the city is overall doing, you know, a great job serving typical kids. And I do, I do think there might be some opportunity to advocate for, um, more inclusivity in some of that programming. And part of the problem, part, part, one of the issues might be, um, that like third-party vendors might not be as inclusive as perhaps the city would, you know, want them to be or realize they're being at, at first. And so, um, I was going to propose perhaps an ad hoc committee to look at, um, kids programming with the city and also we could also look at access in physical spaces of the community, including playgrounds. Um, and, uh, and I could do maybe kind of a report on kind of some of the features and what I think things stand right now. But also maybe suggest some places where advocacy could make an impact and see if the commission would support me maybe advocating, uh, going forward.
No, I, I think that's a great idea. You're reminding me of, of some of the other cities. They have like, um, Play LA and LA City that is focused on expanding access to, um, adaptive sports. And I've, I played sports, um, super important for my development. So I think that's a great idea. And there's insights we can take from other environments to learn from. We don't have to requit, recreate the entire wheel. We have to adapt it to Santa Monica, but there's some insights from other environments. So, um, I, I think that's a good idea. And I, I think, um, and maybe, uh, Commissioner Link Gillis can chime in here, but I, I know we've been very involved in, in making parks, um, in Santa Monica more accessible in the past.
Yeah, I think that, um, my experience with the parks, um, Michael, go ahead. Oh, Nancy, I'm sorry. I think it muted. I want to hear you.
Okay. I'm sorry about that. Um, we have a commitment from Parks and Recs that every playground, we were involved in two. One is the, uh, Janahan, one, uh, I guess that's Hollister. And then the other is, uh, just by Annenberg. So we were involved in, you know, had a lot of input into those two accessible playgrounds. They also, whenever they're renovating one, they're all using the universal design, uh, model. So I think, um, playgrounds for the most part are spoken for, but I'm sure there are other community, other community spaces, uh, public spaces that have not been thought of. Um, and Parks and Recs has always been a great, um, partner of ours. So I think it might be a good idea maybe to start with them and see what other spaces they might control.
I, I think it's a, I think it's a really important thing to, um, so another thing I do with my older son is I'm a coach in pony baseball and the city is involved with both pony baseball and Santa Monica Little League. Um, and it, this is at Los Migos Park, uh, and, uh, on Sixth and, and Holliser, um, or Sixth and Pacific. Uh, but then also Santa Monica Little League is at Memorial Park at 15th and Ocean Park. And, um, and the, you know, I find that, that, that our league is inclusive, but it's, that's because of, not because of policy, but because of individuals, uh, you know, with big hearts. Uh, but to somehow quantify that a little, or codify that a little bit to sort of enshrine that inclusivity is, I think it's important in, in line with our work. Because both of these leagues are beneficial. Because both of these leagues are beneficiaries of free uh, public resources, you know, the, the fields and, and before, yeah. Yeah, if you guys, if you guys, if you guys are supportive of this, I, you know, I'd, I'd be happy to sort of take the lead on it and if anyone else was interested in it, please feel free to get involved and I could give an update next meeting on uh, any, any, any conversations I've had.
I, I think it's a great idea and if you want to take the lead on it, I, I, I support you. Um, in fact, I played baseball for a long time, so bonus bias points for focuses on baseball. Um, but yeah, are, are there, actually, are there other commissioners that may want to join? Uh, Commissioner or have interest in this topic as well that would want to team up? And, and just one question, what, what are your ideas, they don't have to be fully fleshed out, but about kind of the deliverable of like how, I, I heard like codifying inclusivity, but do you have any thoughts or it, it may be too early, but what are your thoughts about kind of the deliverable from the ad hoc or maybe you can come back next month, but just wanted to put it out there?
Yeah, I think, I think immediately what springs to mind is um, you know, ba- basically examining the offering catalog of uh, classes from the, from the Parks and Recreation Department and sort of just um, you know, I, I've looked at it and, and it actually is uh, it, it could be more robust in terms of its offerings, you know, and inclusivity. And so sort of um, ident- identifying that in the catalog, uh, also and, and maybe writing, you know, the appropriate city um, professionals and sort of calling their attention to this, um, with some ideas of how, you know, how for instance, like Super Soccer Stars is the vendor who does, you know, many, probably dozens of classes throughout the week for kids of different ages up to the age of like 12 or something. Um, but you know, for instance, in the three and four-year-old group or the five and six-year-old group, um, there's no um, there's no possibility of having a delayed child um, participate in the younger group because it's a, it's a birthday cutoff. You know, so for instance, that uh, um, you know, al- also maybe uh, groups that were more parent and meat oriented, even for older kids, so the parent could sort of be present right now because it's COVID to, you know, parents kind of aside from the very littlest ones aren't, haven't been involved and that can be a barrier. Certain, I think just identifying barriers and uh, and, and maybe putting them down on paper. Um, uh, and sort of maybe challenging the Parks and Recs to take the next step towards inclusivity for um, atypically developing kids. And um, and, and I agree, I think I'll leave the parks alone. I mean, I've never personally experienced any issues with parks, they're pretty great here, you know? Um, my daughter who has gross motor delays and uh, and low, low tone, you know, we um, we always find an appropriate space for her to play here in the city. Um, but uh, so, so yeah, so the programming and then also um, I think uh, that it might already exist, but just some sort of um, policy for the leagues that are going to be utilizing city resources that they, for instance, can't exclude, my pony baseball wouldn't exclude, but you'd, you'd kind of want to written down that like, you can't exclude someone who has Down syndrome, for instance. You know, in the baseball league, you need to find a way to um, include them, this is a community thing, you know? So um, right now that's happening because people have big hearts and it's the right thing to do. Um, but, but you know, maybe sort of enshrining that right to participation uh, could be another deliverable.
Those all, all sound like great ideas to me, uh, it just reminded me, I did this event called Life Rolls on this amazing surfing event they used to have annually with um, a famous surfer, I know his first name is Jesse, but I lost the last name. Um, just surfers of all ability, um, actually participated, it was an amazing event. Um, and then just as part of your research, maybe saying what do we have versus what Play L.A. has? Um, there, there's some gaps there, um, and that's just a start, but uh, no, those are great ideas, I'm, 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 I supported it. Um, I don't know, do we make a motion to, to establish, is that the next move, move to make a motion to establish this?
Well, just chime in before we make that move, that I would, I would love to support that, Commissioner Nicholas. I have three kids, one of them has special needs, so this is definitely something I would be interested in as well.
Great. Go, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this up, I mean, this is amazing, Commissioner Nicholas, it's all about inclusion and I was involved a few years ago with Special Olympics, I mean, as a medical person, but um, again, um, helping and whatever I can do. Yeah, definitely, it's all about inclusion, thank you.
Commissioner Link Ellis, are you going to try it? You're muted? Commissioner Link Ellis, you're muted?
Myself, I, I just said the um, and now it's gone, the captions are not making sense.
I think there was some background noise just a minute ago that I muted out.
Okay.
Are they okay now?
Yeah.
Um, so is our, our next move to, to make a motion to establish this?
Um, I would, I'm happy to do it, I moved to, moved to establish an ad hoc committee on um, inclusion and TDF. Children's programming in the city, recreational program.
Can, can you say that? I, I have to write this down for the next agenda, what, what do you want to call that? What's the, what's the official motion?
Maybe the uh, ad hoc committee um, examining the state of inclusivity with children's programming in the city.
State of inclusivity with sports in the city?
I, I second it.
Say, I would recommend um, amending that to um, recreational activities so that you can expand it broader than sport.
So, so examining the state of accessibility and recreational sports? Or does someone want to?
Programs.
Accessibility of recreational programs. Okay, I wrote it down, hopefully I got it right or we can fix it.
Sorry about that, I had a little three-year-old meltdown, but um, but yeah, I think recreational instead of sports is, is perfect language and that's exactly what we'll be looking at is inclusivity and access.
And um, did, I, I heard we got a second by Commissioner Matthew Sussman, do, do we still have that second?
Yes, sir.
Awesome, um, I think we have to do a roll call vote, um. Or do, do we have to establish who wants to join or do we just vote on it, who wants to be a part of it?
I think first we vote on it and then we ask who wants to join.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna go through the, the roll, with the roll call vote, um. I'm at the top, Commissioner Elliott, yes, Commissioner Azaria?
Yes, I'm in.
Commissioner Charles?
Yes.
Commissioner Wetter?
Yash.
Commissioner Nicholas?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Sussman?
Affirmative.
Uh, Commissioner Link Ellis?
Yes.
Did I get, I think I got everybody, okay, so that we established that um, ad hoc. Um, thanks, Commissioner Nicholas, I think that's a really good one. Um, do we have folks who are interested in, in joining Commissioner Nicholas on this um, ad hoc committee?
I am.
Awesome, thanks Commissioner Charles, um, so Nicholas, Charles. Do we have any other folks on the, on the um, that are interested in joining?
I'm interested, Sussman.
Sussman, thank you.
You're asking.
Wonderful, I lo- I look forward to be in contact with all of you and, and perhaps I should also say, Alex, if it's okay, um, since digital equity maybe isn't quite in my wheelhouse, I'll be concentrating on this, maybe I'll resign from the other odd ad hoc committee.
Okay, do, do we have to make that formal or is, is that? I think that's good enough, okay. No, no, I, I want you to focus on, on stuff you're really passionate about and, and this seems right in your wheelhouse or, or I'm really excited about moving this forward. Um, and again, when you bring it up, um, I know we don't have a full house, so maybe if some other folks might want to jump in at a future meeting, but um, I just want to double check, we got three folks as part of um, your ad hoc. Is anyone else interested or, or should we um, close this item and move forward?
I would like to join.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then I'll just, I know we, we haven't been properly onboarded really, um, and we'll talk about that a little bit um, in the, the next uh, item. Um, and just a reminder, there's a meeting on April 11th, uh, onboarding orientation, if you're able to join, uh, April 11th from 10 to 12. But just now that you're in an ad hoc, you guys can email each other, like, you know, with all four members CC'd. Um, there are some rules, you know, like I'd BCC a lot of my emails because you're not allowed to, you know? Um, but because you're in the ad hoc, you guys can CC each other, but it, it gets a little tricky outside your four, but within your four, uh, you know, like a regular email. Um, so just want to, that's sometimes a barrier, it's like now we're in an ad hoc, how do we get started? Start with the email, CC all four of you guys on it and, and start the conversation, maybe jump on a Zoom or something.
Got it, thank you.
Um, all right, so we, now we have um, four ad hocks. Um, are, are there any ideas or around new ad hocks or, or any folks? Um, any other conversations around ad hocks we want to have or, or are you guys ready to, to move on to the next agenda item? Any thoughts?
I propose to move forward, move on.
Okay. Does everyone, does everyone go with that? Okay, cool, thanks. Um, so the next item is a, a 5B discussion and possible action on participating at the Housing Commission meetings on April 21st and May 19th. Um, so just want to give a little bit of context, uh, um, let me pull up the email. Um, I believe it was the uh, one of the commissioners, Commissioner Gomez, um, from the Housing Commission reached out to um, me and Vice Chair Wetter and um, they invited us to attend the meeting on April 19th. And then they, they wanted us to be observers and then at a future meeting, um, offer some insights and recommendations. Um, in the email, they said they wanted our recommendations around improvements to the 15% interior modification requirements between the city trust fund and 100% affordable housing projects. That's verbatim what it said in the email, but as I followed up, I'm not sure if that's exactly what they want us to provide guidance on, we'll get. But what I do know is they want us to come to the first meeting on April 21st and at a subsequent meeting, make a presentation with recommendations. Um, and they said that um, it's open, or we can add other commissioners besides me and the vice chair to join. Um, and when we attend on April 21st, they'll give us, uh, we'll talk about when we'd be comfortable to present at a future meeting. It doesn't have to be May 19th, but um, that, it's, it's been a little bit of tricky communication. Um, I haven't heard back to the original person, but I know the ask is come to April 19th, we want your feedback on some things the Housing Commission's talking about and come back at a future meeting. And I said yes, we'll do that and um, I'm able to go on April 19th, but I'm not available in May and frankly, the legality of housing is in my wheelhouse. I'm, I'm hoping there's some folks in the commission that, that's more in the area of expertise, maybe some legal folks or some more housing folks, I'm more.
I know quite a bit about it.
Awesome, so, so you'd, you'd be interested in attending that meeting on the 19th?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Um, so I just want to, to, to provide that context that uh, if folks are um, would like to attend the 20th, please join us, let me know or that's something we can talk about and then if you're interested in uh, in being a part of developing or participating in a presentation in May or onwards, also let me know. Um, and I know that was a lot and a little confusing, but let me open it up to, to your thoughts around that.
Is the meeting in person?
That's a good question and another item we're going to talk about, but um, my understanding is the one on April 21st will be virtual. I'm unclear about May, um, that, that's my understanding at this point, but I have heard that um, pretty soon things will move back to in-person. Um, but my understanding is that April 21st, I believe will be blue jeans, um, either blue jeans or Zoom, but it'll be virtual in April. And I'll, I'll, I'm going to follow up and make that clear, but that's my understanding as of this meeting. Uh, Commissioner Sussman, I see your hand up.
You answered my question, um, I was asking uh, if it was the Housing Commission and you answered it, thank you.
Great. What, what do you think about as an idea, um, I'll send to the commission the, the meeting details for that meeting. Um, if you'd like to join, just as an observer, um, I'll just send that information out there so everyone has it.
I'm sure, thank you, I would love to attend, but I don't know much about that area.
Yeah, and, and if, if you're only comfortable just being an observer, learning more, that's fine. Um, part of my ask is I'm hoping for that part two where we provide the presentation. I'm, I'm kind of reaching out to this commission and seeing if there's any folks with more subject matter experts that um, they want to be more involved in, in doing a presentation or putting together a presentation. Um, I'm happy to collaborate, but I just, that's not my, my area of expertise and I know we have some folks who, who know about that stuff. Actually, I don't think we have um, the chat feature in, available on these meetings, so I would have tried to share it in the chat, but I'll, I'll send an email to, to folks with information on the April Housing Commission meeting, if you're interested in joining. Um, but I, I want to open it up and see is anyone interested in potentially being a part of a presentation at a, a following meeting, um, with recommendations um, for the Housing Commission as it relates to the, the accessibility topics that they're going to cover in April.
I think it might be easier to figure out who would be ideal to give a presentation once we. I think it might be easier to figure out who would be ideal to give a presentation once we know once we've observed the first meeting and get a sense of what the issues are. Because that way we can find out who's a subject matter expertise. Who has subject matter expertise or is more comfortable talking about both issues. That's just your thought.
No, I think that's a good approach.
Commissioner Alex, there isn't chat box. Isn't it on the left? I'm not sure if that works though.
Yeah, there's the chat icon at the top, but for me, it says chat is turned off during this meeting. So other teams meeting, there's lots of activity going on there. And I like to share links and pictures and things that relate to our topics. But maybe because this is a Brown Act meeting, they might not allow that stuff. But I'll inquire for the next one. But like Housing Commission meeting information is some perfect to go in there or like a video that, you know, something topical I like to share rather than just talk. Sometimes sharing the resources helpful. So I'm thinking as next step, I'll send that information on the meeting. Hopefully, as many of you can attend as possible. And then we'll we'll see who is interested in the part two of this and being part of a presentation. Yeah, so we can we can. I guess that's our next steps unless anyone has any other ideas or wants to volunteer right away to to present at some point, but it might be premature. All right, are we okay to move on to the C? 5C? The next item on the agenda is a discussion and possible action on May's Mental Health Month activities. Oh, no. Okay. In the past, the commission has participated or had an event for May's Mental Health Month. So I just want to it's getting kind of late, but I wanted to bring it up if we wanted to try and maybe put something together next month as a commission. Share some ideas around that. Before we get into that, one thing I do want to share is at the city council meeting on the let me get the on April 26th, they're going to have a May's Mental Health Month proclamation, and I'm going to be there to accept it on behalf of the commission. So we were going to do that before COVID, but it didn't happen. So we're I'm going to do that on the 26th. So that's one thing we're participating in. But I wanted to open it up and see if you guys have any ideas and want to try and put something together next month or I'll stop there. Any thoughts around that?
This is Catherine. Am I being heard?
Yes.
Definitely. I I hope that we can do something, even if it's a small thing. Even like I was appreciated up at the farmer's market. They had a UCA UCLA medical health thing on mental health. And they were just passing out, you know, flyers and things. And but so it just made me think, yeah, anything we can do, no matter what. It's just something to 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 have our presence in the mental health. You know, I don't I don't know what it could be. Even for me, even if it's just a banner, you know, flying saying Mental Health Awareness Month, even something like that, just something that shows that we're aware and we're putting our energy towards mental health awareness.
I have a question. Are you talking about a physical banner or a virtual banner? And if so, where would it go?
Well, I was thinking of the actual physical banner, you know, on a little one of those little carts around Santa Monica, but I guess it would have to be a virtual banner. But I know that they used to many years ago. I wasn't around then. I just heard about it that they had like they had a disability banner that they used to hoist up. Disability Month or something like that. So even at City Hall, if they could hoist a flyer up there, Mental Health Awareness and, you know, something like that. I mean, I hope somebody, I mean, I just would like us to do something to me, you know, to really because I feel so strongly that mental health is just it's that bugaboo, you know. It's like people are just they they don't accept mental illness. I mean, they'll accept, you know, they'll accept me in my wheelchair. They'll accept somebody with, you know, without a hand. They'll accept harder hearing. They'll accept all that, but they don't accept mental illness. So, you know, I'd really like to address it.
I can chime in a little here because I work for the Department of Mental Health. Some ideas. So locally, we have our service area leadership team where if if you know about LA County, there's eight service areas. We're in Service Area Five, Santa Monica. And they have a group that meets monthly and talks about mental health issues or community organizations or stakeholders get together monthly with representatives from the department and other county agencies and talk about things. I attended last month and they were talking about there's a big effort, a partnership between public health and the Department of Mental Health to make these. They're like wellness centers, but virtual. So they have a calendar of virtual events for that people can get on within Service Area Five. So maybe we can talk to them about getting something on their calendar as a way to get the word out. Or maybe we can connect OPCC and St. Joseph's Center to be a part of that. Or another idea is there's a group called Access for All under served cultural community. They're focused on the mental health needs of people with disabilities in LA County. They meet monthly on the second Wednesday. I can connect folks with them, maybe present to there or something. Or it's just I'm just concerned about the timeframe more than anything, just where we're getting close. Or it's it's we can curate information and get it, maybe have it go on our Santa Monica website or our social media. Like that Access for All group just puts together a resource list focused on people with disabilities. And it's on our website. Maybe we can have the city push that out, push out. We have a partnership with like Headspace at the at the Department of Mental Health. Just we can focus on curating mental health resources that can go out to the community as possible, something. I also looked into Crip Camp has like a kit for holding a screening. Then maybe we can do that. It's it's freely available on YouTube and they have like content to facilitate a discussion. They suggest it takes around three and a half hours. Maybe we can do that and reach out to the city to help get the word out. I'm just throwing out ideas. Just I'm cognizant of the short timeframe and the challenges. But I we are involved in mental health as a commission and in our outside lives. So I want to, you know, do some, but I'm just trying to figure out how to deal with the constraints we have.
Maybe we could sponsor a showing of the Crip Camp, you know, something like that. Right at the library at, you know.
That's a lot of work and that's a lot of staff. Yeah, I don't think until we're back in person, we can do anything like that. Do we even have a budget?
It's a good. I haven't gotten a a good answer on that. They usually suggest that I partner with other commissions because that'll make an ask more plausible. But I haven't gotten a number yet.
Okay. Personally, I just think if there's there's no time to do anything properly this year.
I did bring this up with the library and they said, you know, usually there's a two month. Like you give them a two month heads up and they're happy to work with us. But I didn't meet with them until like about a week ago, so it was already too late. But this is something I want to do every May. And also in additional, something maybe for ADA Month or for Disability Employment Month. Or I'd like to have at least two regular cadence things we're doing with the library. It's just we missed out really on the window for mental health. But I maybe it's just curating resources for folks. That's and I can ask the city to push them out. Because my expertise is digital mental health. So I already have plenty of stuff I can share and maybe just getting exposure to that. Like these are resources you can get now from from home that might be helpful for you or a family member. And just getting the word out on those because part of the issue we have is just people describe it as finding like a needle in a haystack is they Google stuff. And I can kind of give them resources that put them in the right direction. That might be helpful for some folks or for a family member. And that's maybe something we can do in the shorter term.
Alex, the list you sent me of your resources, I think, is terrific. And I think something like that should be sent to and distributed to city council members.
Maybe maybe that's a good thing. Maybe I'll send a letter, something to the mayor or a couple of city council members with curated lists of resources for Mental Health Month. And maybe I'll send that in prior to the 26th.
Right. Then they'll know that, you know, it's not that we don't want to do it. It's just the timing and the, you know, all the constraints on us just are not letting us do, you know, the kind of event that we've normally done in the past. We've done movies, we've done panels, we've done art shows, we've done all kinds of things. But there's just everything, you know, takes time. Even when we did the library thing, you know, we we had that five months out. And even then, we only had half the month because somebody else already had the other half. So I'm not sure. We should try and spin our wheels now on three weeks' notice.
Yeah, maybe we just table this and, you know, keep it made 2023. We definitely want to do something. We we've built some of the infrastructure to do that moving forward. But I will. I will, if the commission is okay, I'll curate some resources. I'll refresh what I sent you. I have even more updated stuff and I'll send them something. Who do you think I who who does the commission think would be good to send that email to? I'm thinking the mayor, maybe.
The mayor, the mayor definitely, sue him, definitely.
Phil Brock.
Phil Brock. Okay.
Who was the councilman who at that meeting when they decided to keep us separate said that that the Disabilities Committee should Commission should look to get involved with mental health, not even aware that we've been doing that for as many years to exist? Is that Oscar?
Yeah, I believe it's a Councilman De La Torre. Should I just send it to everybody?
I would send it to everybody.
Okay, okay. All right, I'll. There's a
And the city manager. And the city manager.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I'll I'll put together a letter.
Okay.
So I'm going to put together a letter with curated resources. I'll send it to the city manager, city council, and I'll I'll get that out before the 26th when when I do the proclamation to kind of, you know, add some strategy to it. A double whammy. And then again, if just wanted to highlight that there's the Service Area Leadership Team by DMH. And I can send that information out to the commission and the Access for All underserved cultural community that meets monthly. If you do want to get involved locally and have a better sense of what the county is doing, which may inform what we want to do as a commission. So I'll follow up and send that information along with the email with the the information on the Housing Commission meeting. I'll add that info. I'll just send a follow up with with some stuff we talked about today. Are there any thoughts? Are we all okay with just with with that plan or any other thoughts before we move? All right, I'm going to keep it moving to 5D discussion and possible action on expiration of COVID-related emergency orders governing Brown Act teleconferencing. So I think this ties into what a lot of people have talked about in this meeting is this may be our last virtual meeting. I haven't gotten any specific directives, but I have kind of gotten like, you know, we might be meeting in person soon. It may be where city councils meeting is one idea that that was shared. But I haven't gotten confirmation of where the physical space was, but that eventually we will be meeting in person and it may be soon. It may be even our our next meeting. I did mention I had some concerns about it just because, you know, some folks may not be comfortable to meet in person for a variety of reasons. Health or whatever, and really advocated to try and do it hybrid. But one of the constraints is the Brown Act was written a really long time ago and didn't realize and didn't before Zoom and Teams were available. So they it's not really codified on how to do a hybrid, even though everyone knows it makes sense. That's my my hot take. So I just wanted to put that out there that eventually, maybe soon, maybe the next meeting, we may be in person and just kind of wanted to get a temperature check and get your thoughts around that.
That would be amazing.
I'm all for meeting in person.
It are so folks, it sounds like people are willing and at least the folks on the call are willing and able to meet in person if and when that happens.
Definitely.
Yeah, definitely. You can meet in person. Either way, I'm flexible.
I'm in.
Great.
Me too. It would be a pleasure to see you all in person.
And again, this I'll keep you guys posted the email as soon as I get like specifics. But they keep saying it's happening. It's going to happen. Yeah. It almost this was this was like one of the last weeks we could definitely meet virtually. But I haven't gotten any word on on where the space was. We used to meet at Wise and Healthy Aging, but it was unclear if that'll be where we meet. They did say maybe where the city council meets. And they shared another training space, I believe, on Fourth Street by the freeway entrance where they have other trainings where ideas, but nothing concrete and no date. But we know the city council is starting to meet in person, I believe, the next meeting. So eventually that's going to trickle down to us. It's just we haven't gotten specific guidance. But I just wanted to share that with you and see if you have any, if you guys are on board or any hesitation around it.
If I may say something. I'm looking forward to seeing everybody in person. I'm looking forward to being in the attending the next meeting in person. But now given that this is the Disabilities Commission meeting, I want I would like to keep in mind it's just a matter of principle that we should try if we can push back and make sure that there's flexibility for any future members or any future guests that want to come and speak to the commission to have some kind of virtual option. One thing that the pandemic has taught us is that all of a sudden lots of people, people with disabilities, they were able to participate in things that they couldn't before because of the increase of virtual meeting. So it would be nice if we reserved some. The um increase of virtual meeting, so it would be nice if we reserved some championship time.
Thank you for that, I I totally agree, um, and even just, there there may be folks that uh. Can't participate because of their physical or whatever disability may prevent them from participating as a member of the public. Um, and and we don't want to take away that opportunity as as a principle. Um, but no, I I totally agree a hundred percent with with your sentiment and um, I'll continue to to share that. And and I I did share that sentiment when they brought it up, I said, you know, I I want to keep the the virtual option. Um, and hybrid, but there, the constraint was just on the law itself, like. There's rules, there's just, I don't want to get into it, but that was, that was part of the barrier, but I'll I'll continue to push. Yeah, I want to meet in person too, but I I want to make this as inaccessible as a commission as possible to, and I think it's only possible with the hybrid. Um, especially in twenty twenty-two and what we've learned after the pandemic, so. Um, I don't think physical in-person only is gonna cut it. Any other thoughts or comments before we move on? Good to move on? Okay, um, uh, five E discussion and possible action regarding strategy for outreach. To fill vacant commission seats, so um, just. Oh, we have one open seat, um, I believe one more, at least one more seat is opening up in. July or or uh term ends in July, so um, just wanted to bring it up, um. I'm hoping we have a full commission starting the new fiscal year to to do all the important work we we do, um. And I I do want to add someone, we do have one applicant, but they they applied right after they did the last appointment, so he just missed that, so. Hopefully, uh, um, this person is interested in in staying on board, but I just wanted to get your feedback on ideas to. I'm hoping we have, you know, several candidates, um, um, that are able and and qualified. And wanting to um be a part of this, um, and a pipeline of extra folks, um, is ideal. It, things just got disrupted in the past year, um. When I was looking years ago, there are always several candidates in the queue, and now we only have one. Um, and it was brought up at a city council meeting about like, um, the the mayor brought up a plea to to have more folks apply to. Commissions, including the disabilities commission, so um, some of the strategies I um, that I I talked to staff with is. They're gonna do a social media plug, so hopefully when you see that, if if you're comfortable sharing that out. Um, that would be helpful. I got a list of the neighborhood association, so when a communication goes out, I'll. Blast it to those folks, um. But, yeah, just I I wanted to just bring that up and get your ideas on on where we can outreach, so we can get a cadre of folks interested. So we can um really hit the ground running July one, or whenever we induct that that new class.
I think we stopped having as many applicants when we were not able to choose commissioners. Um, the city council has taken over that function. And in the past, we don't even know who they've appointed until they show up in a meeting. So I'm not quite sure. How we get, how we get around that other than. You know, talking it up within our own groups and asking, giving them the, you know, the. What you have to do to qualify and encourage them to apply online. It's really hard to recruit people now because it's not, it's not a one-on-one. We're just a different commission, that's all, we're just different than the rest of them.
I think one of the major holdups is just the cadence of you have to get on the city council agenda and they have to, it has to come up. And they have to go through that process, and I've seen that get kicked back, you know, month after month, and that's during COVID, that that hurt us. Um, so I'm hoping we, uh, if I'm, you know, do a magic wand and things go perfect. We have many candidates and we get on that agenda on city council. Like as soon, as close to July one as possible, and we get new folks on and we have a full commission, some other folks and. But that's again, ideal case scenario, but um. What are any ideas around recruiting folks or or um? Just encouraging you, if you have folks in mind that you want to share being a part of the commission, I definitely encourage it.
Are we still putting a little notice in the regular daily press? For, you know, about the opening? We used to.
Yeah, I believe there's like an official process, I think it's like the month before the term ends. But I've nudged about like whenever there's an official process to get the word out, do it ASAP, can we even do it before? So I'll continue to be a broken record in getting us the official communication, the official social media blast. And the newspapers, um, I've gotten pushed back like, oh, it's only in this window, so I'm like, okay, the first day that window opens, can we do it? So, yeah, I'll um, I'll continue to do that. No, thanks, thanks for bringing that up and reminding me.
And I hate to be the wet blanket here, but that's a budget item, that's something you pay for, it's not free. To get our notice in the paper.
Oh, I didn't, we, I forgot about.
So they have to do them all together?
So if someone is interested, um, bring them close to July, you said?
Then, the the application is posted now, um.
That's what I thought, um, I was in school and accidentally I saw this um. Um, position, and then because of COVID, I think it took um a year or close to that time.
Yeah, you can, you can turn in the application year round and then they pull from there for the appointments. And there's one applicant currently on there.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Wetter?
I was just saying that the uh, I was thinking that the neighborhood organization is a great start, um, and I think you're right. As soon as the window opened, we got the city to push it out on their official platform, social media and so on. Um. I'm thinking about. Um, some of the disability organizations that are in the neighborhood, that I wonder if we can reach out to, that could be another place to reach out to.
Yeah, I I'm off the top of my head, B C R C, but do you have any other folks uh that we should reach out to or? Just let me know if there's other organizations, we. We have TJ and Marielle have been commissioners, current commissioners, I'm, have gotten the word out in the past, but uh, there's other organizations, please let me know.
There's um website regional center, which serve the west, with the website, um, there's some. There's some disability um service organizations that provide services to people with disability, um, that that are in the area. Um, some, like step-by-step organizations like that provide services to people with. Developmental, children with developmental disabilities and so on, so they, that 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 could be, that could be a good choice of um, a network.
So I'm writing all those down, and if more come up, not during this conversation, shoot me an email or or bring them to a future meeting, because I. I want to spread the net as as far as we can. But these are all good suggestions. And your own networks, if you have, if you know folks that are interested, able and want to do it, um, reach out. Send them the application link or give them more info about it, invite them to a meeting, that's totally fine. Any other thoughts about recruitment, um, or strategies or um? Ways we can get the word out, or um, if they're not coming to you now, please just email me or or bring them out of future meeting, because. Open to get appointments as close to July one, window open, so we can get moving, um.
I have two people that are interested.
Awesome, I'm I'm gonna send a a follow-up email after this meeting, I'm gonna include um. Housing Commission meeting info, the link to the um, application. And um, a couple of other things we talked about, so look out for that and and share that application information with your two friends.
Thank you, sir.
That's awesome, yeah. Any other thoughts around uh? That, or should we get into five uh? Keep it moving?
Yep.
Um. Uh, five F, uh, future agenda planning. Um, I just wanted to to open it up, um. So we're to for future agenda items, just I want to again get a. I'm hoping we're not meeting quarterly much longer, this, we need to meet at a regular cadence and hopefully things are gonna get back to normal when we're meeting in person. Slash hybrid at a regular cadence, because that's the way this optimally works, in my opinion, um. So I just want to have a uh several ideas, so we can start to get folks from the city um. To um lined up, because there's, there's a little bit of lead time to get speakers or um. If they're not within the city, to reach out to folks to to come to our meetings, um, so I just want to open up kind of ideas you have. Um, for future agenda, and just to give you a sense of of what's coming up in the near term. Um, we're in April, May, we're gonna go dark, but we're gonna, um, there's stuff going on in the community. We can have a meeting June, the first Monday in June, if you guys want. Um, I know there's some stuff around the city budget that we may want to talk about, or there may be some things going on that we may want to talk about, so. We can do June sixth, if you guys want, or a date in June. Um. And July fourth is a holiday, that's our our regular time, um, so it's possible to do one July eleventh. Um. And then um, eventually, or starting next fiscal year, we want to have a meeting, um, it's called the retreat. That the city says where we, it's really the onboarding we never got, um, where we meet as a commission, kind of get the culture of what it's about. Uh, the common definition, strategies, uh, we got, have to do a new election, electing the new vice chair. Chair and kind of, you know, do some team building, um, and I already, I I brought that up at the last planning meeting. And we want to do that ASAP, and they said, you know, that'll be one of our first meetings, so hopefully that's in July or or soon after, so. That's one, one thing is I want to have our our retreat, um, that that's a high priority for me. And then something that we've talked about a lot is I want to get the ADA coordinator um to present at our meeting and. Um, I believe her name is uh Myrna Medina, so I I definitely want to ask to have her present, but. Um, those are the two that that I have that I've heard and and brought up, um, is the retreat and the ADA coordinator. But I want to open it up, just your brainstorm, your thoughts, any ideas to to start uh thinking about uh moving forward in in the next fiscal year.
Is anything happening on July fourth?
That that's a Monday, which is our regular scheduled meeting, um.
No, I meant, I meant in the city, the parade, the celebration, anything like that, we used to always be in it. The disability commission was always in the parade.
I, that's something we could reach out and and get involved, I haven't heard anything.
I don't think they've decided, I don't think they've decided yet if they're having one this year.
Yeah, I don't know.
And and again, that's something that takes months kind of to get together. And that's where we had our, gave away our, you know, our bracelets and our. Um. All of ours, you know, our swag that we had. But. I don't think there's any left, I don't know. Again, that's a kind of a budget issue.
I guess I I think we mentioned at a previous meeting, we we may want someone from the library to come.
We also talked about. Getting a city council member to come. Maybe even Sue Hammer, maybe the mayor would come.
You know, that that's another thing, uh, just. Um, at a previous me, uh, city council meeting, they were talking about um, council members would. Partner up with, I I'm losing the the right term, but uh, they'd be a partner for commissions, um. Um, and we were thinking about strategically who we may want to partner, I think they're still kind of figuring that out, but once. That's codified, I think we we want to uh engage with strategically and then get involved with some council members and. And I think our liaison, um, but maybe the first step in that is is inviting someone we think might be a a good liaison to. To come to our meeting.
I uh, I thought that that would be, um, I I, you make a good point, and I thought that would, that might be. What five G would be talking about, I remember the city council members talking about how there used to be liaison. From the city council to the various commission, they're able to provide a lot of like um guidance and leadership, and insights, advice. So on, and I thought that I I always felt that that was a really good idea, if we could have somebody from the city city council. Occasionally sit in our meeting and offer some insights, um, as to what's possible, what's not possible, um, we could re. It could really um. Lum- illuminate our way forward on a lot of issues that we'd like to address. So I don't know if that's possible, I remember they were talking about whether or not that that was legally allowed, um. But they were, they seemed to be really interested in trying to find out how that would work out and how to work it out, because it. I think it obviously serves the public interest.
I think now that they're meeting in person, or they're starting to meet in person, and the engine is turning over, you know. Perhaps that they will consider that now, I just think they've been so bogged down. You know, having to do what they're doing by Zoom or whatever, that, you know, everything kind of got pushed to the side. When you mentioned the budget, is this the five-year budget that they're doing?
I'm not, I'm drawing a blank, but I. During, during our meeting with staff, they said that there's a lot going on in May, that it it may make sense to have a a meeting in June, um, but. I know there's um, the human services, RFP going out, um. It may be an amendment to the two-year budget, might have been the thing, um. But it's just June, there there's a lot of action potentially in June.
Okay. So maybe it's better to wait until June?
Yeah, another thing that was pending too is they were, they had to figure, the council had to figure out how to resource staff to commissions. They were examining a restructure of some sort to better allocate resources to support commissions, and then there's still. Um, the consolidation of the three commissions. Um, I still see the social service commission is meeting, so I don't know if that consolidation has happened yet. Um, and when that does too, we probably want to have a liaison for that new bigger commission. Um, because I I think we'll we'll want to work closely with them, so there there's a lot of stuff on the back burner that hasn't. Because I, I think we'll, we'll want to work closely with them. So there, there's a lot of stuff on the back burner that hasn't moved. But I got library. Council members. Retreat. ADA coordinator.
Parks and Recs, they haven't given a, a presentation in a long time.
Parks and Recs. I know. Maybe in the latter half, when they're talking about the next two-year budget, we definitely want to be involved with that. Who would be the best rep for that?
I don't know, but I would ask Maggie Willis.
Maybe even something on mental health too at some point in the next year. Maybe latter half because we're passing mental health month already. And if, if, if the ideas, I know it's, it's late on a Monday, but if, if the ideas aren't coming now, shoot them my way or, or bring them up. Because I do want to try and get a queue, just. Just think sometimes you request two speakers and one's available or they have to switch. So it's good to have. A queue of things lined up. So we, we have a few things that I'll reach out on, but I'd rather have more than less. Because it, it's sometimes there's some lead time or some scheduling conflict. So it's better to have more things lined up. But I just, just keep thinking about it and let me know. But want to open it one more time if, if there's any more ideas or if we want to keep the agenda moving.
Well, if you find out what, what presentations are going to city council as a rule, they would come to us first. And just do a, you know. Do a presentation and we would give our input. So especially with the way this is worded now, this has to be the city council agenda driven, correct?
That's my understanding with, when there's that monthly cadence, we should get the preview before. But it, with this quarterly cadence, it's been, they're not syncing up. But yeah, that, that's a great point, city council driven.
Maybe that's something we can ask David White about.
Yeah. Just once we get out of this quarterly cadence and we, things get back to normal, we. Yeah, we. We want to provide insights on things they're acting on. We, we have people committed with, with lots of expertise on a variety of topics. We can be helpful. And I'll bring that up at, at our next agenda planning meeting or whatever with Aleah and Maggie, just to get a sense of how we can get synchronized again. Where we're getting a preview of what the city council is talking about and we're talking about it here. We're kind of ad-hoc-ing it for the last year. Are there any, any more comments on this or I know it's getting late. Should I keep it moving?
Keep on moving.
All right, a 5G discussion and possible action on establishing liaisons for Santa Monica boards, commissions and task force. This is just a carryover item that I, I like to keep on the agenda to see if. In the past, we've had commissioners be a liaison for a particular commission. I was passed on the social services commission. I, if I'm available, I usually just try and see what's going on there. And I think once this big human services commission established, we probably want to think about having. At least one, maybe two commissioners be a liaison for that. But I just wanted to put this out there and see if anyone's interested in. Becoming a liaison where you get on their mailing lists or follow the agenda, share insights with the commission and, and. Other things, but just wanted to put that, throw that out there. Any interest in possible being a part of a liaison or if not at this point, just think about it and bring it back.
If I may ask, has the commission, has the various commissions been worked out? I know they were talking about version drama then. Have they tabled some of the, the, the mercers for another date? So have, have they gotten to a place where they know where the? The, the convention would set up, would, would look like.
Yes, they, they did at a city council meeting. The, the ruling was there, they were thinking about consolidating four. Including the disabilities commission. So we got to, we're staying alone and then the other three are consolidating, which. Social Services Commission. Seniors Commission and Commission on. Well, the three, three of the original four are becoming the human services.
Commissioner on women.
Yeah. So those three are now becoming, I believe it's the human services commission or. I forgot the official name, but they, and I believe it's supposed to start July 1. But I'm not a hundred percent sure about that. And part of that too was that commissions would meet quarterly. Until the end of the fiscal year, which ends June 30th. And that the commission would look at ways to source staff in a different way. Because there's, there's not, their staff is a low resource and they had to figure out a new way to do it.
I wonder if it would make sense to table this until the next meeting to give the commission some time. We got settled and worked out what the conversation will be like.
That sounds good. Is, is everyone cool with tabling this and, and bringing it back? And I think maybe even after July 1, when the dust is settled is, makes more sense. I just thought maybe someone was super anxious to be a liaison for something and wanted to get it on your radar, but we can table it. All right, I'm going to move on the agenda. To public input. Item 10, public input is permitted only on items. Not on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the body, state law prohibits the body from taking any action on items, not listed on the agenda. Including items raised under this agenda item. Are there any members of the public that? Are here and want to make comment? I don't think, let me double check, but I don't think we got any written public comments, or at least I did not get an email and they're usually posted on our website. But let me just make one. Last check. And I did not, I didn't receive any in writing. In my email or in, or posted publicly and. And let me just make sure every. Is there anyone from the public that wants to make comments? If you do use the raise the hand feature, everyone in the public. Your mics are good to go. If you unmute yourself, I'll give it another minute or two. And I have given everyone from the public access to make a comment. Joe. Do you want to make a comment?
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to introduce myself briefly. My name's Joe Antonini. I'm, I'm the one applicant for the disabilities commission. The reason that I missed this cycle, I guess, was because. You know, I, I heard Sue Hemrich's plea for applicants for the commission. So after I heard that, I, I applied. So anyway, I would be. Honored to, to work with you all, but I'm not sure exactly what the timeframe is for the city council to, you know, make these appointments and. I obviously would also like there to be more applicants than just myself so that there's some, you know, competition in terms of. Who gets on the, onto the commission, but. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for coming and making public comment and applying. Appreciate it.
Alex, do we know if the opening that is coming up is for somebody with a disability or not?
Let me, let me look. I'm not sure. I have to ask. I don't know. There has to be at least six with a disability. One, two, three, four. I, I think, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think one of the two are available to everybody ones for a disability. Yeah, I, I believe there'll be. For the four-year term, starting. July 1, 2022, I believe there'll be one opening for. Person with disability and one open for either community member or person of disability. That's, that's what it looks like based on the website. I can double check with city staff. All right, I don't see any other comments from the public. I want to make a motion to join. Can I get a second?
Second.
Can I get a roll call vote? Commissioners area?
Yes.
Charles? Commissioner Wetter?
Yes.
Commissioner Nicholas?
Yes.
Commissioner Link Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Seussman?
Affirmative.
And I affirm, just I, I want to thank everybody in the public for joining and for being patient while we work out this teams. It was tough. I was back and forth with the IT guy, but it. Sometimes there's silver lining in it going bad because we highlighted some things we didn't see in our training. Which anyways, we'll do better next time and, and thanks, everybody. This is a, this is a big step actually. Getting on a new platform is not easy. So this is big. And thanks, everybody. And, and. I'll send a follow-up email and let me know if June 6th is, is open and we'll go from there. We got exciting. New ad hocks and stuff to work on. Thanks again for your time. Really appreciate it and, and I'll see you next time. Have a good one.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you, Alex.